Sure.
Ms. Proper. Mr. Giller. Mr. Lees. Mr. Smith. Mr. Guerra.
Here.
Ms. Gort.
Here.
Dr.
Here.
You have to switch it on over me.
There are not.
Yeah, that's something was up. Okay, any changes to the minutes?
I have none.
In that case, the minutes are approved. At this point, I'm going to open the meeting to public comment on historic preservation issues that are not on the agenda this evening. As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historic preservation issues in the community. With that, I will open the meeting to any public comment. Please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone and then star six to unmute yourself. Is there anybody in the audience? Okay. In that case, we will move to the consent calendar. Does anybody want to call up? Oh, how did that come up? Wait a minute. Sorry. Okay, does anybody want to call up? The 232 Morning Star Residence? Does anyone want to call up the
Hello?
Cerrillo Cedars Unit B R Town Home Expansion? Does anyone want to call up the Gasman Duplex Edition? Okay, the next item on the agenda then is the BGV Entrada Parcel Seven Employee Housing.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair and Commissioners. I'm driving tonight with my non-dominant hand, so please enjoy the show.
Do you need a designated driver?
Well, we'll see. It'll be it'll be more fun this way, right? Okay, so the first item is, or this is a final hearing for the Entrada Workforce Housing. Got the vicinity map and the 3D rendering up on the screen there. And as I mentioned, this is the final hearing, so I will go through a little bit of information just for the public's information and for the record, and then I'll get into what's changed since the last time that you all saw this application. So just a reminder that this is proposed for the corner of Highway Nine and Huron Road, just north of the 711, was annexed into the town in 2024. And there are a number of different regulations at play. There's annexation agreement, the BGV development agreements that we're all well familiar with now, development code, and then also the land use district. Primarily, this has been evaluated against the annexation agreement, since that overrides the others when it sets any standard. So this is a proposal for 41 bedroom units. It's not the one that I wanted. I don't want the site plan here. Let's see. All right, here we go. And just a reminder that access is taken here, the north part of the site. And basically goes around this parking, and then the unit itself or the building itself is in the center. This is substantially, I mean, almost to the square foot what you saw last time. Right, but just so everybody knows, the dumpster is down here. The, there is access easement here for the adjacent parcel. That's not part of this application, and they won't be able to take access off of Huron. And really, like I said, basically the same, in the same form as it was previously. Just to remind you all, the density and the land use were both outlined in the agreements, and they're both met here. Open space, no storage setbacks, parking requirements also met, substantively the same as what you saw last time. For the record, you'll note that this is below the 30% that is set for open space in the code, but that's because 20% is the minimum in the annexation agreement, and they meet that standard. Okay, so some changes since preliminary. The first is that the landscape plan changed slightly. I'm happy to go into more detail, but basically we had comment from engineering that they wanted to make sure that the waterline and easements and the line itself would be protected from, you know, tree roots and sutherers, so they kind of moved a little bit of the trees around and some of the plantings on the west and the south side. Staff still finds that the, there's adequate buffering and that it, you know, addresses engineering's comments. Another new piece, they provided fence elevations for the fence and then also the solar. So the fence design, and which I'm happy again to pull up, I don't want to belabor it right now with the left hand, but happy to do if you'd like. But the proposal is effectively, it's for a five-foot fence that is open enough to allow wildlife passage, but still kind of provides a delineation between those properties. And the design for the fence is dictated by this plan, and so when they come in for permit, it will have to match this plan. Whereas with the rooftop solar that they've proposed, some changes, you know, especially on the sort of functional side, you know, might occur, but it's substantively, you know, this is the conceptual plan for that as well. You might have noticed the square footages of the building size and the hardscape changed ever so slightly. I think it was five square foot less in the building and 23 or 25 square foot more of hardscape. They're still well within all their square footage allowances. And one of those was to accommodate, you know, some, some changes to the access on the southeast, southwest corner. Southeast corner, but otherwise really substantively the same. And then, yeah, just to put a point on it, there are no changes to the architecture other than that roof color to match the solar, to the height or to the circulation that you all saw last time. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Staff is recommending approval, zero-point analysis on this.
Any questions for staff? Alan?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the brevity. The, I don't know if this is a question for you or the applicant. How do the emergency ballards work? Who controls them?
Yeah, actually, they're going to be able to speak better to that.
Okay, all right. And then the, I imagine that people turning, thinking they're going into that meets a friend or something, visiting that complex, will still accidentally, inadvertently turn up Huron and turn into the entrance to the storage facility. Is there enough room for them to do U-turn and get back out? And what's left there?
Down here, you mean?
Yes.
So kind of going in there?
Before the gate, yeah, because they won't have a code for the gate. I just think people may think they're entering the property from there and they won't be able to, will they be able to turn around?
Yeah, my understanding is that that area is not going to be affected at all from what it is currently.
Is there enough space of like paved or gravelled area for them to turn around?
Turned around a tundra in that spot to put up notice, so it is possible, yeah.
Oh, okay. That's all I got.
Elaine?
I don't know if my question's for you or for the applicant, but just like the Gold Rush lot, there doesn't seem to be anywhere to hang out outside or sit anywhere that I've seen in any of the drawings. Just feel like with 41 units, it'd be nice to have some kind of outdoor something.
Yeah, I will, I think the applicant will be best respond to programming, but I will say staff did evaluate that, and I think there's a couple pieces there. One is that the site is constrained overall. That's a lot of why the annexation agreement is written the way that it is. And so what we're dealing with is a certain amount of constraint in general. But then in addition to that, you know, I think what we had an eye toward was just at the very least to try to make access to nearby trails and safe crossings and stuff as viable as possible, and then also to have sufficient buffering, especially on this, you know, this sort of corner of the intersection. And then I'll let the applicant speak too, if there is actually any specific programming. I can't remember off the top of my head, so they might be able to add more.
Okay. Just like to see at least like a bench or something somewhere. Someone has a toddler or, I don't know, just to get outside. That's it.
Matt?
I didn't have any questions.
Mark, any questions?
I have no questions.
Mike?
I think Elaine's comment has a, or question has a ton of merit, and I look forward to hearing from the applicant.
I have no questions. With the applicant.
He's up in the
Oh, Ethan.
I have no questions either.
I had to see you.
Thanks, Susan. Thanks, Amelia. I have no questions.
Thanks. Uh, with the applicant, like to come up?
Hello, Graham Frank from BGV. Thank you for welcoming me back. I felt like I was with you guys last week, but I was not. But I answered a lot of the same questions. Great questions, Alan. The fire department will control those keys in the future to the breakaway baller. So when you finish, they accept them and you turn them over to red, white, and blue. In the event of emergency, they'll just knock them down, right? And then you, you can reinstall the latch for that purpose, but they're turned over at CO so that they're not taken down. In terms, Elena, on your question, if you look at page L100, the landscape plan, which in the packet, I don't know, keep going down.
It's 91.
Page 91 for us.
In the combined packet.
There you go. That works. If you zoom in there, Elaine, you'll see the picnic table there at the end of the building, highlighted. There, bottom right.
I'm right.
Right by that walkway, to the left of the pointer there. Yep, right there. So you have that little area there. That area got reduced because we had to move the dumpster over to that side, but we still, we did still keep that area outside. In terms of a presentation for tonight, very minimal. You guys know, we believe that this is a huge community benefit and something that's needed. We're excited about it. We've done, we've been in here to talk to you about a few really big and glamorous projects over the last couple of months, but this is the one that kind of maintains the heartbeat of the community, right, with places for people to live and stepping stone living. And we think that this provides that. As you guys know, these units are designed for a small family of three or the growing family to be in and step through and out of these units, and hopefully, you know, a place that a person could move in, have ownership, and move on, but also be comfortable for a number of years. So that makes us really excited about this project and what it provides the community. I think the feedback we have gotten and worked through on a very constrained site has made a meaningful impact. I think it's a site that works really well now, working through with Shannon's engineering team. Snow storage, water lines, what we need to do with power, power lines and burying them in the bus stop. I think that we've created something that's as good as we can achieve in a very small site, and so we're excited about this. And again, as the other projects, we just thank you for the feedback and the process. It's been meaningful. It's been, I think, productive, and I think we've gotten to a good, good point on this project, so thank you. That's all I have for you guys tonight. Until the next one.
Any other questions for the applicant, Alan?
No questions, thanks.
Elaine?
Thank you.
Questions?
Mark? Mike?
Thank you guys very much.
Ethan?
Thanks, ma'am. No questions.
Oh, Ethan.
Yeah, I'm still here.
Good. Now, now you've got something up there and I can see it. Great. Okay, is there anybody online who wishes to comment?
No one, no one with hands raised.
Okay. At that point, I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing on this item. Are there comments by any of the planning commissioners? Alan?
No, I think I appreciate BGV building this and having to deal with the economic constraints and limited constraints of the lot. I still think density like this should have been on the north Gold Rush lot, but I sound like a broken record. So.
Elaine, any comments?
Thanks for the project. Nice.
Mark?
I think we've gotten as good a project as we can get, given the circumstances, and I've said it before and I'll say it again. I feel that the town council has hamstrung the planning commission with the exemptions and restrictions that they put on us to do the job that we otherwise would have done, but given those circumstances, I think we end up with a good project. So thank you.
Mike?
It's a good project. I think it was responsive to the preliminary design or preliminary hearing comments, plus the sort of technical input from town engineering. I like it.
Ethan? Any comments?
No comments. It's all good. Thank you.
Thanks. I have no comment. Okay, do we have motion?
We can get to the page first. If it's on 66, I wrote it down.
Madam Chair, I recommend the planning commission approve the BGV Entrada Parcel Seven Employee Housing, PL 2024-0500, located at 11030 State Highway Nine. The project having met all applicable absolute policies and receiving a passing score of zero points under the relative policies at this final hearing with the attached findings and conditions of approval.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Alan, thank you. Chris, you want to do a roll call?
Mr. Lees?
Yes.
Mr. Geller? Ms. Proper?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
Ms. Gort?
Yes.
Mr. Frector?
Yes.
Thank you. We're now going to move to the preliminary hearing. As I get there. Sorry.
Uh, 232?
Yes.
Should start at 2, what? 232, if it's, if you have the combined PDM.
Jeez. Oops.
Can you go, go to page 232?
No. But I'm almost there. Okay. Very good. The preliminary hearing for the Valor Heritage Subdivision BGV Partial Six, PL 2025-0148. Amelia?
Thank you very much. Okay, so as you mentioned, this is a preliminary hearing, so we evaluated this against the development agreement, the BGV development agreement, and then also the subdivision code, which is in Title IX, but it's Chapter Two. So the proposal, and up here on the screen is the, is the area. It's basically going to be at the end or be an extension of Timber Trail Road on Peak Eight. And the proposal is to subdivide a parcel, this existing parcel, into 14 single-family lots. And I'm going to go through some of the standards that are met, and then I'll talk a little bit more about the questions that staff has. I'm going to try here to get to the plat. I went, I went all the way to page 299. All right, so I'm not sure why that looks that way. But I will let that sit. What are those?
There's a
Oh, goodness, okay. Looks like it has chicken pox or something. It's sort of a weird look, but well, skip to maybe the conceptual plan here for an overview. Okay, so the density of the 14 lots was set by the development agreement. That density has already been transferred. It was transferred in October. There's also a minimum acreage per lot of 0.6 acres. The proposal meets that. And then there's also a limitation on the square footage of each home of 7,500 square feet. The way that's captured is through a plat note, so anything that comes in for a permit would have to show that it's, you know, below or at that maximum. This conceptual plan here can show us a little bit more about the access and the general layout of the site. And so here is Timber Trail coming off, and then this, we'll get into this in a minute, but this would be the, it's a current trail easement for skier access. That's where the bridge would go. And then the extension of Timber Trail comes up all the way through here and ends sort of in the center of the parcel. And then the rest of the lots are served, that don't have access off that right away, are served by private drives. In the development agreement, it was waived to have either three or more or four or more, but this does meet that requirement. Engineering has reviewed it, and it's already set, like I mentioned in the development agreement, that waived the standard of having, of having fewer lots served by private drives. There's also two detention ponds, one up in this area, one then down here. And then, as we'll go through later, the landscaping that we're going to talk about a little bit is all along the right-of-way. Each individual lot, when it comes in for building permit, will then also have landscape review separate from this process, but this landscaping that we talk about is, is along the right-of-way. Okay, I think those are sort of the big things there. Oh, also just to note, you know, that the site conditions as it stands now, there's about a 14% slope or so is on, it is on Peak Eight, as I mentioned. And that's certainly something that I think staff and engineering, planning and engineering staff are still reviewing with the applicant to make sure that, you know, that's been accounted for, but so far not seeing any concerns in terms of lot layout. There are also exceptions in the agreement to allow the private drives to have steeper slopes and things like that. So, so far, no red flags, but still in the review process in terms of the slope of the overall parcel. The other thing to know is, really, there are not really that many other natural features to be accounted for other than the slope, and then, of course, there are a number of trees currently on the property. The trees, the tree removal that'll be necessary for this process is reviewed through a separate permit. Happy to answer more questions about what that would look like, but that's really all that's going out there. Okay, so a couple of things that are kind of detailed in the report are some of these questions that we have and conversations that we're still in with the applicant. So the big one, I think from a staff perspective, is the lot size, actually specifically, sorry, the disturbance envelope size and shape, but, but really the size. I'm going to, I'm going to dare to go back up and see it's the same. Okay. Well, I'll try to zoom in here to give us a bit of a sense, but I'll start by saying that the development agreement has language that says that the envelopes and the lots can be of these different shapes. There's a lot of language in the actual subdivision standards that says, you know, you have to have things substantially right angles and all sorts of other things to kind of have a little bit more of a, of a, of a standard layout. But in this case, the development agreement, working with, I think, the neighborhoods in the area that kind of have a similar layout, and then also just the limitations of the parcel or the realities of the parcel, you know, said, okay, we can waive those standards. However, in staff's review of that language, you know, we still find and feel that the envelope, the intent of the disturbance envelope is still something that is relevant here. And so I just want to read that language. It's in your staff report, but just to bring it to mind. What we're looking at is the definition of a disturbance envelope, which is that portion of the lot where all permanent structures on the lot must be located and with it, within which all construction activity shall occur. It shall be used to limit the location of development constructed within a lot and to minimize or contain the disturbance associated with the construction of such development and to maintain a visual buffer or separation between the development to be constructed and any other development on adjacent lots. The reason why we think that bears some discussion here is that these lots, in general, that's that one, right? Okay, these lots in general, or these disturbance envelopes, follow the setbacks of the property and don't actually bring in the disturbance envelope any further. And certainly, as you can see, and I'm sure the applicant will speak to this more, the, I'm struggling wildly. If you need the visual better, let me know, but I'm going to leave it there for a minute. Certainly, some of these lots are relatively small and oddly shaped, and it might be difficult to make a smaller envelope. However, a few of these, I think, Lot Nine, Lot Seven, Lot 14, just to have an example, definitely from staff's perspective, are not meeting the intent of that language to limit the overall disturbance on the lot. Now, what's, what's interesting and a little bit nuanced about this is there's no standard in the subdivision code that says this is the exact percentage of the lot that a disturbance envelope needs to be. It really just gives us that language that I read out to say this is the intent of what needs to be happening through these envelopes. So we don't have something that we can pinpoint and say this is yes or no. But again, you know, this would allow theoretically someone, somebody to develop and put their, their house and then need decks and outside programming almost effectively up to the setbacks. And in some cases, those setbacks are actually the private drives themselves. So I think in some of these cases, staff feels it's pretty clear that it's not being met, the intent of that envelope. And just wanted to make sure that, you know, the planning commission had the opportunity to weigh in on whether you felt that was accurate and that that intention was not being met or other, other concepts or ideas that you might have on that. And then I'll just end this part of the discussion by saying this is nuanced. It's not a clean, bright, black and white line, you know, so it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all for every single lot here, but really looking to try to meet the intent of those envelopes further than what they're doing currently. Okay, so the other two questions that we have for you are regarding the landscape plan. And I will just start by saying that they are, they're subject to having a certain number of trees and plantings along the right-of-way. They are meeting that requirement. But just to take this preliminary hearing opportunity to see, you know, does the commission have any, anything that they'd like to see in particular around the landscaping? You can get a sense of what it looks like here. It's in these clusters. And this is the second submittal for this, and the first submittal staff just asked the applicant to ensure that any vision clearance around the trails was going to make sure that that was open and very clear for people walking or skiing, but otherwise, you know, doesn't, doesn't have any But otherwise, you know, doesn't doesn't have any comments and sort of thinks that this is sufficient buffering, but certainly asking for for your input on that as well. And then the third question that we have is regarding that skier bridge. So in order to build out the road, need to maintain the skier access, and so that's why vision requires building of a bridge. And just a couple of things to note here. So this one, you know, we don't have a specific code or standard that we're asking you to respond to, but similar in some sense to the landscaping is getting your your thoughts and opinions so that we can, you know, make it more robust if necessary or kind of just get get your general thoughts. And so the two things that, you know, staff has really looked at so far, it's meeting C dot clearance. So that that's probably the most important thing, right, about a bridge? And then also, the design is substantively similar to to the other bridges in town. And so from that perspective, staff sees no concern with these with these proposals. And then I'm happy to go into any more detail that anybody would like, but those are the three questions. So lot size and or the disturbance envelope size, the landscape plan, and then the the skier bridge access design.
Maybe just to clarify, the bridge itself would still need to come through for development permit separately after this.
Can I ask a question about the bridge? Which way are people coming from uphill? Right to left, which sides? It looks kind of steep on the left side.
So the the uphill side is the right side. So as you're noting, they you basically have to orient the bridge to be angled downhill as you go right to left. So that that's what that's why it's it's still slightly downhill even on the right-hand side, and then it actually, I guess, would accelerate a little bit more once you get past that left pillar as it's as it's represented there. In general, that ski back is fairly flat, so even having the bridge design probably will make the ski back a little bit easier from that point, because right now it's, I mean, it's probably like one or two percent of that.
There's not a low spot before that little kids will get stuck in.
You know, there and that way, there probably is like a low spot somewhere on the journey, like kind of undulates a little bit, but I think the way the bridge is designed, they're probably trying to take advantage and maybe even improve this over the current situation to there.
So any questions for staff? Mike?
Yeah, kind of a funny question. Was this earlier called Victory instead of Valor Ridge?
Yeah, the the initial submittal was for Victory Ridge.
And part of the comment, there's there are like, I guess, standards by the county and even our own GIS department. And just to eliminate any confusion, we do have a Victory. I forget. There's another Victory something subdivision, and so the comment is try to not make it so similar, just in terms of the the legal or addressing.
And then, yeah, Victory's on the bridge drawing title block. But not a big deal as long as it's clear. No other questions?
Okay, Mark, any questions?
It would it would be helpful, I think, for you all to explain the bridge and the trail to those of us that aren't familiar with that particular part of the ski resort. It is giving access from where to where?
I can probably help explain that a little bit. Maybe pull up the the subdivision. I'll try and maybe walk through basically where it it comes off of this, the main public part of the ski area, and then.
So it's coming off the trig these?
It's coming off the trig bees, correct. It's a very currently, it's a very nondescript entrance, and that's kind of by design, because really it's just servicing primarily the Timber Trail neighborhood. And so the trail kind of going along the end of the street there over where the bridge is proposed and further down provides ski back access to the majority of lots within Timber Trail or a very short walk off of the trail. You could even continue from where it it terminates on Four O'Clock Run Road further down. Take off your skis, cross the street, and get on the Four O'Clock Run. That's a little bit more maneuvering. Really, the intent of this access is just to provide ski back access to the existing Timber Trail neighborhood. And that's part of why the bridge is so essential is if if the road were to go in, that would essentially bifurcate the trail, and then you'd have a situation where people would have to take off their skis, probably walk down a slope, put them back on. So it's really satisfying the ski access easement, but also the the way the easements were were drawn for Timber Trail filing two, which is the end of Timber Trail there. It had both an access easement, so if a road was continued, there was the right to put a road in there, but also the skier access. So that's what necessitates the great separation of the trail and the road.
So that skier access doesn't in any way connect with the skier access that runs on the other side of Timber Trail behind the houses and also terminates at the top of Four O'Clock. Is that right?
No, it it's a it's a separate one. So the the kind of beachfront row of homes, if you will, has kind of direct ski-in, ski-out access to Timber Trail. Then there's the lower trail that goes beyond the lower side of Timber Trail and then the Four O'Clock subdivision. It's a it's a much smaller kind of single-track trail through there that also ends up in switchbacks. They this one, essentially, they almost come to the same point with like a a row of homes.
At their end.
Yeah, so you if you took off your skis, you would essentially re- reconnect a Four O'Clock run. But I would say ninety-nine percent of the people that are using this trail are Timber Trail guests or residents versus people that are trying to continue on further in the town.
Thank you.
Ethan, any questions for staff? Ethan, you're muted.
No questions. Thank you, Susan.
Matt, any questions?
I have one regarding the removal of the existing trees. Is it going? Is there going to be efforts to maintain the current stand of trees or portions of, or is it going to be nuked and replanted?
Yeah, so we're this is an ongoing process, but I think what staff is trying to look for is to is to not do the nuke and replant, especially because the time of sale of these lots, you know, could be could be quite long. And so the way that we've been working with the applicant on this is they have a current tree permit, tree removal permit in that's been approved to basically remove dead and and dying trees and then use the access. I mean, there's actually quite a bit of access already around, but to the center of the lot, try to align it roughly with where they've got the right-of-way here. And I mean, you know, just in the effort, as you know, the the trees are are important. We're doing a a check-in with them just to go out and check, yep, this looks like standard kind of procedure. And then from there, as each lot gets developed, that's where we look at the individual tree removals and and landscaping all at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Elaine, any questions?
I guess I'd like to understand your setback issue a little bit more of what you're seeing as the concern. I guess I'm looking at one that shows like the site disturbance envelope, and you mentioned Lot Nine. Maybe you can just bring up Lot Nine and share with me what you thought was a concern.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think, you know, part of where this is coming from is that we look at our plats all the time, right? And so there's certainly a variety of what disturbance envelopes look like out there in the town. And some, you know, some are more generous than others, but I think what what is definitely possible, and I think is certainly something that we've we've discussed with the applicants, is to make them significantly smaller, which we're not necessarily suggesting, but just to say, if you look at some of the plats that are out there, I mean, they're pretty small in the lot. However, with respect to the applicant's concerns about the funky shapes and the flexibility of placing, we're trying to find a middle ground. So to give you more specific example, looking at Lot Nine, the concern with this one, just for instance, is if you can see, so like, these are all basically the setbacks. This setback goes all the way to where the private drive would end. And so what you've effectively got there is that somebody could put a house, you know, let's say, right here, and then have a deck go all the way up to the private access easement. Now, would that functionally happen? Like, who would do that? I don't I mean, I'm not sure, but the point is that the envelope itself is supposed to help make sure that nobody is able to do that. And so pulling the envelope back away from an access point like that ensures that it's very clear this is not an area to be disturbed, and we want to bring it back away from some of the more public areas and the impacts on adjacent properties. This one also is another example. I'd say that sort of bucket one is like away from other properties and and other access points. But there's also this general concern that the envelopes are meant to limit disturbance overall, right? And so they're meant to protect the fair amount of open space on the lot. We don't have a percentage, but we know that that's the intent. And so, for instance, you know, and I'm not saying this is what we have to do, but just to say, like, pulling this area back, this triangle up and saying, okay, this is too close to the adjacent lot, and we want to make sure that that area close to the edge of the parcel is protected. There's not going to be a deck there. There's not going to be a hot tub. There's not going to be a building. It's just going to be open space, which is the intent of the envelope. So again, it's somewhere in the middle of the setback, and then pulling it all the way, we're not asking for a literal footprint of a house. But, you know, again, it's, like I said, a little nuanced, but does that help clarify? I'm happy to do more on a different lot.
And and I think I was to say, and the the preliminary direction that we've we've shared with the applicants is look at primarily the adjacent subdivision Timber Trail. There's kind of like on some of those smaller lots, there's maybe a little more generous envelope. On the larger lots, there's obviously a lot of area set aside for for protection to the disturbance envelope. But I think the the suggestion is to maybe mimic the adjacent subdivision or maybe some other similar, you know, subdivisions like Shock Hill in terms of the scale of the envelope. And that that's kind of, I guess, the measure we're we're trying to achieve.
Just to a simpler level on this, you know, it's partly to the question that came up earlier, preserving trees. You know, you can't, you're not supposed to disturb the trees outside of the disturbance envelope. So if that shrunk more, we'll be able to preserve more of that buffer, given that there's going to have to be trees removed for defensible space that are closer to the home.
So Chris, are you suggesting that perhaps there's a precedent in Timber Trail and perhaps Shock Hill for a less generous building envelope?
Yeah, I mean, I I think this be the I I think, you know, less, that's probably the the optimal word. I I think that they're still fairly generous in those neighborhoods, but they are less generous than what's proposed. So we're we're saying it, we're not saying that you have to restrict it so much that you don't have any flexibility of siding your home or anything. But I think we're looking, we're shooting for something that that there is some precedent behind it is. And I think Timber Trail is probably, you know, really this subdivision in in terms of probably scale, in terms of character will probably look like just an extension to the Timber Trail to a certain extent.
And remind us, does it apply to the house footprint or the house footprint plus the decks, plus the garage apron?
Yeah, it's it's all, well, the the driveway is not included, right, to access, but the everything else is, all the other improvements. So decks, hot tubs, house.
Garage apron?
Garage apron, yes, I believe so. And I there might be something if it's connected to the driveway, there's some nuance there.
There's a little flexibility for circulation, but in terms of like any kind of
Structure.
Yeah, any kind, any kind of structure. Usually, the retaining walls, if they're supporting the driveway, are exempt as well. Just understanding that that's I'd say that, you know, probably half of the retain walls you see are associated with the driveway, so there's usually an exemption. But then other policies come into play with regards to retaining walls. But it's really decks, patios, the in the structure itself, hot tubs, those sorts of things that but really the intent outside of the the driveway circulation, everything should be contained within the envelope.
Just seeing some, you know, fairly steep slopes, and I'm guessing for house building and for, you know, having a more level yard area or whatever there will be maybe considerations for retaining walls other than driveway related, so.
Yeah, there might there might be some limited, but in general, you know, kind of, I think, our general expectation is to kind of work with the the lot, you know, we're not trying to like artificially bench or provide artificial fill, but in in limited areas, you know, where maybe they have to cut out, they're trying to do a walkout lower level or something, you might see some retention.
Alan, did you have any questions for staff?
No.
I had one question. I I was also thinking along the lines of Elaine, as far as the disturbance envelopes are concerned. But I was wondering, too, whether the proposed landscaping along the Timber Trail road, whether that was going to impact on the disturbance envelopes at all?
Do you mean, how would it impact? I'm sorry.
Will it encroach or change the
Oh.
the shape of the disturbance envelopes?
Okay, yeah, no, I I so this this are all to align the right-of-way. They're all within the setbacks, so that so I think they're not. I don't think think they're kind of separate for the for the one that's shown here. Yeah.
Great, okay. Thank you. Okay, does the applicant want to make a presentation?
Thank you. Graham Frank from BGV, again. I think relatively straightforward on this one. Great questions. We've been meeting with Chris and the team to discuss the building envelopes. And what we tried to do here was mimic Timber Trail with the flexibility that comes with these lots. They're all very nuanced lots. If you're up there, contours, slopes, views. It there isn't a one-size-fits-all to these envelopes, especially when you look at a lot like Lot Number Nine. Orienting that house at the bottom of the page, you could get two entirely different views. You could get a peaks view, you could get a continental divide view, and you have plenty of space to move within that lot, and we're trying to provide that flexibility. And what we tried to do was look at the limitations of our seventy-five-hundred-foot building limitation and placing it in different orientations on that lot. That's where we tried to go with the flexibility. Going back one step from there, I want everybody to understand the health of this stand of trees that is up there. So we worked with planning, we went in, we removed what we thought were all dead or dangerous trees up there. When we actually met with the fire department, we were meeting on site, and we stepped back from an area because literally a tree fell where we are meeting. There is beetle kill everywhere. There is root rot everywhere. And when we finished our removal with what was acceptable to staff, you guys remember four nights ago, five nights ago, there was a big wind event. The next morning, twenty-six additional trees were on the ground. So we need to understand, right, this is not a healthy, vibrant stand of trees up there, and but we also understand the effort. We'd like to maintain some of the mature trees. But in this flexibility, you guys as a planning commission understand, putting in some spruces, some new lower trees. Right now, your your screening between lot lines is as if you planted a series of toothpicks in the ground, and thirty feet up, you have your first branches. So we want to make sure, especially with last week's de novo hearing, we want to make sure we're aligned with what we're trying to do. We are trying to maintain what is healthy up there, but we're also trying to maintain healthy lot sizes and setbacks between you and your neighbor. And with that setback, you can get the appropriate screening, but you also have the flexibility to build something special on some what we think are some of the most special lots that'll ever be done in Breckenridge with the contours, with the views, with, you know, three hundred and sixty degrees of of a potential up there. And so, yes, we we totally hear the desire to remove to move back on some of these lot lines. And we're we're looking at that effort, but we're trying to do it while looking at the Timber Trail subdivision, especially because that's where we're trying to get continuity through the lots. And Shock Hill, we don't feel like is as applicable, because we're And Shock Hill, we don't feel like is as applicable because where those site disturbances are limited in Shock Hill, there's huge slopes. And that's where they pulled the majority of those lot lines back, to your, to your comment, for those huge slopes. So yes, absolutely, and we're working on it. We met with Chris and Amelia this weekend. We are, Bill's team is looking at where we can physically pull back, but we want to do that in a conscious fashion to give people the best ability to develop these in a good fashion and also to understand we are not in a beautiful, healthy, vibrant stand of trees. That I think is critical to get on the table for all of this. The first comment from the fire department was, well, for defensible space, you're going to have to remove most of it, right? With all the dead kill, with all the dead trees. So we will work through that and we're open to the feedback. I think it's important to describe the easement. So the easement is for Timber Trail specifically. That's why it is a bit concealed. It is for those rows of houses. And we're still working with the neighborhood. They may have a desire not to have a bridge. We met with them as recently as today, we were up there and saying, what is the best solution? Is there a better solution to take your skis across, off, walk across the driveway and go to the next four houses down the hill? They are looking at that, so they've come to us with that idea because we committed to maintaining that access over our driveway. But we're working with the neighborhood to say what is the best and what is the least obtrusive to all of them. We obviously like the notion of not building and maintaining a bridge and all of the liability that comes with that. And then, you know, all the footprint items that come with a bridge is, if a bridge isn't necessary, we would rather not use all the materials and the space to build a bridge up there. If the neighborhood would rather have a walking path where you walk across the driveway and, and get back on. So talking about kids, talking about the use of the bridge, Elaine, to your comment, what are the slopes, little people, all of those things? So we're still working with the neighborhood and we will come back to the next meeting with that solution. And, and it's really driven by their desire, right? It's our commitment to maintain their access and that was our commitment from day one. And so we're still working through that with them, but as of today, that may be changing a bit. And so our goal is continuity with the Timber Trail neighborhood. Our goal on the landscaping that we are putting in is what we believe is double what is required by code because we think that that new landscaping on both sides of the road will provide a better experience than what's there today and keeping headlights from going into those lots. As you go up that Serpentine Drive, we thought that that was very important. And so that is what we've done with that lower landscaping that we're doing on both sides of the road. But we're all in all feel like this plan has provided access on all of the sides of lots through the interior lots to the exterior lots and onto the snow. And we feel like you can really ski home, even if you're walking across a street to get to your house. It's really a good experience to ski home, put your skis on and leave in the morning with two different lifts that you can access, whether going down to the Snowflake or whether going down to Peak Eight. So we are excited about this all in all. We think that the feedback has been very good. We will come back snipping the edges where we think we can to get those lot lines, the disturbance envelope smaller per the team's feedback. But overall, we think we're really moving to a great place here. And again, as the other projects, appreciate you guys' support and feedback as we move through these. So with that, I'll take any questions that you guys might have.
Any questions for the applicant, Alan?
Thanks, Graham. I, the main question is on the driveway locations. When you sell a lot, are you going to say, you know, that your garage needs to be within so many feet of this proposed driveway? My concern is homes of this caliber that we've been improving, everyone wants their garage on the main level. But in some of these lots, it's, the driveway is at the bottom of the lot, not the upper part. So on a 0.6 acre lot, if they're going to want to put in a 100 foot driveway to go around the back, that's using up a lot of their disturbance envelope and probably going to cost them a lot of points at a 14% average grade.
I agree with you, Bill. We, we, or Bill's, Bill's not in there anymore. Bill left, so you have a better option. I can give you a better option. Christie's here.
That's a great comment. I appreciate it. We are.
Sorry, could you just identify yourself?
For the record, my name is Christie Matthews Lydell, and we are not planning driveway accesses or restriction areas. We are, like Graham said, giving the future owners the flexibility on access and design of their homes.
Although each of these projects will come to us and they're going to have to, or staff first and maybe to us and they'll have to.
Correct.
With the points and if they want to have a design with a driveway,
Yes.
100 foot driveway going behind the house, they'll have to figure out, put in a lot of EV chargers.
That's exactly right. And we wanted to give them that, our desire is to give them that flexibility.
Got it. Okay. I think that's all the. Yep, that's it.
Thank you.
Elaine, any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. You don't show any trees along Valor Drive. Is there an intention to kind of match the trees there or?
We didn't, so along Valor, as you, as you tier out there over the maintenance facility, we wanted to maintain the, as you step down, the grade's not as severe there. So where you've come into seven and you're looking downhill, we were trying to maximize those views downhill and give them the ability to landscape that downhill side of their lots versus us minimizing any views over the years down there. So that, the intention was to stay focused on the main drive and where headlights were potentially turning around the curves to prevent those into lots, whereas Valor there on the lower side of the page, you're going directly in and into your lots.
Okay. Can you explain skier access to these lots?
Absolutely.
How do you get to your house?
So 14, at the top of the page, upper right, 14, 13, 12, 11, 10, well, everything on the outside, let's say. You ski directly in. You can ski home. If you're talking about lot seven, for example, you would come in that skisment right by 14 and into lot seven. And if you wanted to leave downhill, you could, you could walk either to the end of the cul-de-sac above seven or down on Heritage and come out the skisment there by the pond or by lot five, either one of those. Coming home at the end of the day, we anticipate on those interior lots that you would come in that upper side. So you'd be walking downhill to come home once you get to the path from.
The path you're talking about is the one that's at the top that makes the right angle to go over the bridge?
Correct.
So you can actually, where it makes the right angle that you can walk across that to get onto
Yes.
Trail Road?
Yep.
Okay, alright.
And then, and so the, that's basically how you get in and out. You can see the, the easement between two and three there as well. So we tried to provide multiple lines in and out of the site. And then one thing to note as well, there's the mountain access that is between 12 and 11. And we've provided a separate access there for Vale Resorts. And that is so if they ever have to replace the bull wheel on the top of Rips Ride, you can get a mobile crane and drive it through that path to the top of Rips Ride. Cause obviously that'd be a very expensive endeavor, airlifting, you know, using an air crane to get that up there. So that was one of Vale Resorts' requirements up to the space. So Elaine, we've, we've tried to be predictive, getting people the legal ability in and out. What we have seen in these subdivisions and especially lower where we looked at parcel four and parcel five, people find the path of least resistance and it's working really well. For example, when Michael Dudik and myself met with the head of the HOA today, you know, he explained, well, we actually go, this neighbor is fine with us going through this yard and this neighbor's fine with going through this yard. And it is pretty much a peaceful symbiotic existence. We expect that same thing, but we also wanted to give a few legal paths of travel, trying to be as predictive as we, as we could, both uphill, sidehill and downhill through the development in case we didn't have that same symbiotic relationship among the neighbors.
So that 10 foot easement would be sufficient to get the crane from Timber Trail Drive out on Trigneys?
Correct. We actually worked with Vale for the, they, they use a 250, basically a bolstered 250 mobile up there or a hydro. So either one of those will fit, get on to the grade that's there. They actually did some regrading last year. So we've met up to that regrading or we will meet up to that regrading when we do this work. And then they can drive it directly on there.
So that was anticipation for this exact issue?
Yes, sir.
Matt, did you have any questions for the applicant?
Oh, I'm sorry. The lot lines are supposed to be made at right angles, right?
We asked for leniency on that or, or were granted leniency on that through the development agreement because of the geometry of the parcel and the access to the different lots. So we did what we believe the best we could. Obviously you didn't get that right angle on seven, but.
Yeah, what, why between seven and six is it not like going across? It's
Between?
Seven and six, it seems very, like you've made some weird angles there. Except for the entrance for lot six, is that why?
Well, for, from seven and six, we want to make sure we got to the appropriate grade. And we see, we see six accessing off of Heritage where we see seven off, accessing off the upper side probably from Timber Trail. And so it was the delineation of where those two driveways would be and trying to, again, give those two, not putting those two neighbors on top of each other by any means with the grades that it's a cross slope across those two sites. So giving them the flexibility across those two sites. That's why you see that line jogging and heading up the hill across the cross slope.
Okay, sort of understand. Thank you.
There was a method of madness. I'm sure it could be interpreted 20 different ways, but that was what we thought. Yep.
Matt, any questions?
Just one on the snow storage on the private drives. Is that just included in that private driveway easement? Is the snow stack?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Mark, any questions?
No, I think I'm good.
Mike, any questions?
Hey Graham, are there, you spoke to the ponderosa pine, I'm sorry, the lodgepole pine trees. And that summer have root rot, beetle kill, but are others in better condition?
As we have done the selective removal up there, we've tried to stay, as, as you're probably aware. So when you are, when you're removing, you're trying to remove around bands because the, the lodgepoles work as, as basically an amoeba. And if you remove big areas of the interior, you start getting wind events that pull down whole sections. So we used Beetle Kill Tree Services and Christian was monumental in, in helping us look at where are the stands we could preserve up there and try, even if there were areas where there was one or two dead trees to fall in a group. We did that, chopped them up and brought them out instead of taking the machinery in to do it, to try to preserve those. So yet, that is the exercise that we've done. I believe the planning team has been up a couple times to take a look at what we've been doing. But we've been trying to do that where we saw the most healthy stands on the removal and also staying within the guidelines of our permit.
Okay, so I think we have a shared understanding of the symbiotic relationship of, of groups of lodgepole. Why wouldn't we identify a few of those? Because we've all acknowledged they're important. Why wouldn't we identify some of those healthier groupings and protect them in your, and not allow those to be in the building envelope?
We could look at that. I don't think if anything's in the middle of these lots that we're, our intention would be give the person the flexibility in the center of those lots to build what they desire. If it was on the outside edges, we could absolutely look and see if there are things that we could provide, you know, towards the outsides.
I mean, there are lots with not a lot of natural amenities, rock outcroppings, mixed forest. If, if the best natural amenity besides the views is healthy stands of lodgepoles, let's protect them.
We could look at where it's feasible to do that. Absolutely. I think it's good feedback, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Ethan, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No questions at this time. Thank you, Susan.
And I have no questions.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we'll open the hearing to public comment. Please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you are attending the meeting by phone and then star six to unmute yourself. Anybody online?
No one with hands raised.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to comment? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and move to commissioner comments.
And answer questions, right? Three questions that Amelia has.
Yeah, that's coming.
Should we get both?
Yeah, we can answer questions at the same time.
Make sure the questions on.
Two thirty-eight. Great. Thanks for the presentation and Graham, thanks for your input. In terms of the question on, I don't have any general comments, but reducing the building envelope and improving placement. So I, I never knew Timber Trail existed until I think one of my first meetings, we reviewed a project for, of a home up there and I, it's the only time I ever drove up there. And I was surprised to see the density and the close proximity of these large homes on the small lots. But that's what the market demands. So I really believe that this is up to the developer because they have to sell this product. And I'd let the market drive this because most of the town of people aren't going to see this. I mean, even if you're skiing on Ski Hill Road. So I really feel that I have no issue with requiring, reducing the building envelope or changing, putting restrictions on placements of the home because they have to sell these lots and we'll be able to review each home as we see it. So that's, so I guess my answer is I don't feel a driving need to change anything. I think the bridge design is fine and same thing on landscaping. It's really up to the developer, the homeowner and the HOA, how much privacy they want. I'm, I think the general population is not going to be driving on these roads. So it's up to them how much privacy they want. So I don't think we should put any restrictions, further restrictions on that.
Last question was, do you have any additional comments?
Nope, I made them.
All right. Do I agree that, that the disturbance envelope should be revised? I think I'd like to see some setbacks from the private road. And does the commission have any comments on the bridge design or materiality? Just what I've kind of brought up before, just ease for kids to get up and over it and snowboarders. Look at the slope of it. Does the commission agree that landscaping is adequate? I believe so. And I do not have any additional comments. Thank you.
Matt?
The disturbance envelope question. It would be nice to, as mentioned, to see those healthier stands of lodgepole taken into account and maybe a little bit off of the, off those private roads. Just, and you know, just put a little bit more thought into shrinking them down like where it makes sense to. Not to infringe on any future homeowner's ability to rotate their, their house as needed. But there's probably instances in each lot where you can trim off some of that to make it more palatable for the neighbors. Bridge design is fine and landscaping is fine. No more comments.
Mark?
Regarding the disturbance envelopes, I was kind of shocked to see what had been drawn. This is more typical of a standard subdivision and kind of surprising to me in Breckenridge. I wish that I had a disturbance envelope that was like this in my neighborhood. The, I haven't done the percentage, but I probably have maybe 45 to 47. The, I, I haven't done the percentage, but I probably have maybe forty-five to forty-seven percent of the lot available for my home when I build it, which made me have certain constraints. My neighbor who came in and bought a spec house had a deck that was built along the disturbance line, which tapered from one end about eight feet to fourteen feet and it would, it created an unusable lot and they had to go through a whole process with you guys to trade square footage so the disturbance envelope was the same size but reconfigured in order to do that. So I look at this and, and I, I see a certain lack of fairness in that. Um, I think that, that the marketability of these lots is not going to be impacted. They're gonna sell these lots because they are premium lots regardless of the building envelope. I respect what Graham is doing here because it, it's prudent to make it easier for whoever buys it, but, um, for whatever reason, when my subdivision was, was done, that wasn't taken into consideration and all of us who had built in that subdivision have had to configure their homes around the building envelopes, which are restricted, far more restrictive than these. So I think that I, I'm frankly, I'm surprised that, that the town doesn't have a formula for this and frankly, it's probably too late to put that into the code because this is the last subdivision that's going to be done. Um, so that's a mute point. The, um, bridge, I, I think is, uh, appears to be fine. I don't have any comments about that. The landscaping along the right of ways seems to be adequate and, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Chair. It's a nice, uh, design, but I, I firmly believe that the, um, disturbance envelopes really need to be designed. Um, they're essentially setbacks, as Mark said. Um, one example would be healthy groves of lodgepoles should be protected. Another thought would be, I would think you would want to protect the view sheds from various slots and, and design the building envelopes accordingly. Um, uh, that would also play into site impacts, uh, driveway requirements and things like that. I really don't think Norris Design, um, has thought through the building envelopes. Second one, bridge design, I think it's compatible. Mark mentioned that we would, uh, have an opportunity to review a design bridge in the future. One question for me, uh, was lighting and so I presume that would be included in any future design. Uh, the landscaping along the roads, I believe is adequate, as my fellow commissioners have said. Um, no additional comments, um, under additional comments, I'm sorry. Uh, I, I think you're close, but not quite there for preliminary. Thank you.
Okay. Ethan?
Thank you, Chair. Um, it seems obvious to me, well, it's obvious, that, um, the building envelopes are just following the setbacks and that is not typical. Um, having built houses in all of the highest subdivisions in Breckenridge, including Timber Trail, um, this is not a typical, um, building envelope. And I understand the applicant wants to maximize as much as possible and give everybody the options, but that's, again, um, uh, it, it, it breaks precedent in town. And so I would, I would respectfully disagree with Alan and, 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 and would ask the applicant to follow the guidelines of the planning staff and reduce those sign, those, um, building envelopes. Uh, the bridge is fine. We'll be seeing it again, as everybody said, so I'm good with that and as well as the landscaping and I have no further comments.
Thank you. Um, I agree with the comments, uh, regarding the, uh, changes to the disturbance envelopes. Um, I think that a number of important points have been raised and I share that. Um, so I do think they should be revised. Um, I think the bridge design looks comparable to other ones in town. Um, I, I think it's fine. I think Mike's comment about lighting is an interesting one. We'll look at that. Um, and I think that the landscaping along the rights of way is adequate. Um, I don't have any further comments.
I ask one, one final question. Uh, I think we were assuming that with like some revisions, this would be ready for final. Would the, would you guys agree that, uh, the-
Respectfully, I, I really think the, um, building envelope question is, requires a lot of thought. I wouldn't come back here with building envelopes in final. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I guess we were asking if you thought it was ready for a final. Um, that, that was something we didn't ask, but we thought, you know, with the exception of, of the building envelopes, that they were, were close and were meeting, um, the intent of the development agreement. But, but you're, you're basically saying that you don't think they're ready for a final.
It's a risk.
And, and I would agree with that. I think the building envelopes are a big enough issue that that should, uh, be addressed again in the preliminary stage before we go to a final.
I concur.
I do think there is, there's possibly another way to address it and that's if staff believes that they've addressed this sufficiently, we could bring it back as a final and you guys could continue it-
Yeah.
-at that point, which would still give them the opportunity if they've satisfied your desires to approve it at that meeting. Would you be comfortable with that?
I would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I beg you, Susan. Um, I think we can move to the town council update then.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much for the help.
Thank you.
Uh, before I do that, I just wanted to mention, uh, something, uh, it's been a short and sweet stay, but, um, Amelia, this is her last meeting and, um, anyway, but, um, we've loved having her here over the last year and she's obviously done some pretty important work for us, including what you saw this evening, so wish her well.
I'm disappointed to hear you're leaving, Amelia.
Thanks, Ethan.
I, you've done, from my perspective, you've been awesome and I'll miss you. I'm not disappointed in you, I'm disappointed that you're leaving.
Terrification, I appreciate that.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Um, so yeah, last week at, uh, town council, really the, the, there was just a couple of things that were talked about. Um, one, the Breck Monasori building, uh, which the town owns, it needs some serious foundation work. And so there was a couple options being thrown out on the table in terms of, of addressing that, um, issue, um, but the council ended up saying, let's pour a basement foundation under there, so we're gonna put a serious investment into that, uh, to get a new full basement foundation under that building. Um, but the primary thing we had going was the call up for the parcel three, so the council had called that up at the last meeting and that was, since you guys didn't have your July first meeting, some of you might not have been aware of that at, um, but, um, anyway, they did decide to call it up and they had the de novo hearing last week on that. Um, council had a number of questions, many similar to what were brought up with the planning commission, concerns about trees being lost and not more being preserved and then a lot of questions about the new landscaping plan that would be going in there. Uh, but the end of the day, the council was satisfied and voted on a five, two, five in favor of, uh, approving the development with, uh, a couple of conditions. One, um, including all the conditions that had proven, previously been approved by the planning commission. And then, um, secondly, a, a couple other conditions, uh, the one being, um, being centered on any trees that are lost, either of existing trees or of new plannings, that there's a guarantee of them being replaced, any existing trees that have to be replaced at three to one ratio, um, any new trees would have to be replaced and requiring a performance bond to, which is a step kind of beyond what we normally do. Um, but anyway, that's, that was what was approved. So anyway, end of the day, um, I think they pretty much, um, acknowledged planning commission's, um, efforts and agreed with all your conditions and just added that one, um, but they certainly wanted to discuss it some, so yeah, so it was approved. And, uh, that's pretty much it. Yes.
Three was the duplexes that we talked about.
Yes.
The, um, the other lot, what they're doing on the hill there with the shotcrete-
Yep.
-sheeting, what is that gonna look like when they're done? Is there a plan for that? Because I, I assume that they found out when they started the excavation that they needed to do this because that wasn't something that was discussed during the process.
The wall was on the plans, yeah. It was. Yep.
That's why they moved the building, um, away from the hill because they realized they had to put that wall up and people on the east side would be looking at that wall.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why. They knew that they had to do a significant, um, dig into the hillside to accommodate all the parking spots they're required to have and that was one of the reasons they got an exemption from policy seven R related to that because obviously if you had a, a thirty foot retaining wall, a shotcrete, they would get maximum negative points under a couple different subsections of policy seven.
So do we know what that's gonna look like when it's done?
I thi, I think it's probably pretty similar to what you see today.
Cool. Yeah.
It'll be a big building in front of it though.
A couple of things, I don't know, I've met the pastor of, uh, Father Dyer and I don't know if everyone, I didn't know that they, for those of us who were on the commission when we first approved the big plan and then they came back for financial reasons, a small plan, they ended up going with the big plan. And I kept one, I didn't know that. I kept wondering every time I drove by, that looks like the big plan. So, uh, I met the, and they're having an open house this weekend, uh, if any, I think Saturday, ten to one is just a general open, if you don't want to go to a service or anything, um, just to be, to look around and see what they did.
It's really nice.
I think their fundraising was more, uh, successful than they had.
Yeah. Uh, second thing is, uh, I just want to point out that Susan and her husband got a, uh, outstanding community service award from NRO this, uh, past weekend, not just for what they do for NRO, but for everything in the county.
Thank you, Elaine.
Well done.
Is that it? Okay, then at six fifty-four, uh, the planning commission meeting of July fifteenth is concluded.
Good night, everybody.
Bye, Ethan.
Bye, Ethan.
I have a little dark sky feedback.
Am I officially off the clock? Am I officially done?